Monday, February the 26th. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Milovich Walters?
President.
Commissioner Reed?
President.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Mayor Protem Pavlados?
Here.
And Mayor Mohamed.
Okay, would stand for the pledgeable allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You all have the minutes in your package, and I'm looking for an approval.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the February 12th meeting.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Milovich Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk? Yep.
And Mayor Protem Pavlados?
Yes. Recognition, proclamation, appointments, and presentations, and I believe we have none this evening, and there are no hearings, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine, have been brought forward at the direction of the Board of Commissioners, and will be enacted in one motion. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. A, to adapt an ordinance amending Part II Title VI, Chapter 256, Section 256, 10B, of the Village Code in regard to employee participation in the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. The ordinance states Resolution 211-R-12 was approved September 26th of 2011, adopting the 1,000-hour standard for the IMRF participation. The resolution was incorporated into the employee handbook but not the Village Code book. And B, to approve payment of invoices on the warrant list dated February 26th, 2018, in the amount of $310,594.53. Are there any comments?
I'm moved to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Milovich Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Yes. Is there any old business? I don't believe so. And Board, Commission, and Committee recommendations, I believe there are none, so we'll move on to the Information and Updates section, Public Works and Streets Recreation Report. Commissioner Milovich Walters.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I do have a couple items on the agenda today. The first one is regarding two ordinances. I'm going to give you a little background on them, so you know what they are regarding. The two ordinances before the council will allow residential properties to connect to village utilities using a payment plan. This will entice properties that are currently on a well for water and some type of septic system for sanitary sewer to tie into the village systems without having to pay a one-time lump sum fee. According to our Public Works Department, there are about 20 to 30 homes not fully connected to village utilities. If the homes are not connected to the sanitary sewer, the public utilities must make random visits to assure or ensure that the septic systems are functional. Currently, the Village Code requires a one-time payment of between $15,882 and $20,844 for sanitary sewer, depending on which of the three areas of the village the home is in, whether it's east, central, or west. Water connection fee, that is currently between $15,097 and $15,222. The connection fee charges increase on May 1st of every year. The proposed code amendments would allow homeowners to establish a payment plan with the village to hook up to the utilities. The parameters would be as follow. A, the program would only apply to single-family residential water and sanitary sewer connection fees, not to multifamily or commercial connection fees. B, the legal owner of record for the property needs to make a written request to the village for the utility connection fee program, with the request to include the upfront payment no less than 10% of the connection fee amount. And the time period over which the balance will be paid is no more than 10 years. And Part C would be an interest rate of 6% will be assessed for any portion of the connection fee to be paid over time. D, based on the amount of upfront payment and repayment period selected, a lien claim form will be recorded against the property. I've got to go to the next page here. All right. So, we've discussed it with staff, or I have, with my Public Works Director, and we really feel this will be beneficial not only to the homeowners, but to the village as well. So there are two ordinances that I would like to make a motion for, but after fielding any questions.
Are there any questions from anyone?
Nope.
No.
All right. Well then, I'd like to first make a motion to approve Ordinance 2018-04, an Ordinance Amending Part 10 Title IV, Chapter 1040, Section 1040.03 of the Palos Park Village Code in regard to sanitary sewer connection fees. Do you want me to do them separately, or all at once?
You can do them together.
Okay. Also, Ordinance 2018-05, an Ordinance Amending Part 10 Title IV, Chapter 1046, Section 1046.32G of the Palos Park Village Code in regard to water connection fees.
Hearing a motion, is there a second?
Second, sorry.
No, thank you.
Motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Milovich Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Yes.
And I have one other item on the agenda. It's regarding a vehicle for the police department. Police Unit 252, which is a 2012 Ford Explorer with 133,598 miles, is being retired. It's getting pretty old, I guess, before it becomes a little too unreliable, but it will be used by another department. Public Works recommends replacing this vehicle with a Ford Explorer Police Model. We've priced this vehicle and came up with three prices. These prices do not include specialized equipment that would be added by the Palos Park Police Department once the vehicle arrives. The prices received were as follows. RZA Ford, 2018, the price was $27,465. Suburban Purchasing Cooperative, in 2018, gave us a quote of $26,456. And National Joint Purchase Alliance gave us a quote of $33,750. The low price was submitted by Suburban Purchasing Cooperative. The SBC also offer extended warranties at the time of purchase, and we recommend that a three-year, 100,000-mile, yeah, warranty be added for a cost of $1,215. Does anybody have any questions regarding this purchase? If not, I'd like to make a motion to waive the bidding process and accept the proposal from Suburban Purchasing Cooperative for a 2018 Police Model Ford Explorer for the price of $26,456, and to add an extended three-year, 100,000-mile warranty for an additional $1,215 for a total cost of $27,671.
I will defer to you, Commissioner Polk, for a second if you so desire.
A second? Hearing a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Milovich Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pavlados?
Yes.
And Leslie, I have no official announcements, which is so weird, because I always have announcements.
It's not going to stop you, is it?
It is not going to stop me, though. I had something to say, you could tell by my tone. Our school district, District 118, is hosting its Shamrock Enroll. It's a fundraiser, the biggest fundraiser that the PFA does for our school district. This is Saturday, March 10th. You can go online at palos118.org, and that's the school district's website, and there will be a link through the PFA where you can get more information about the Shamrock Enroll, but it'll have auction items that all raise money for the school district that provides things that our tax dollars cannot pay for, such as lots of assemblies and authors that come to visit, and special programs. So please support your community. And if you can't go on March 10th, you can always just, like, buy a ticket and not go, or make a donation, so.
Or you can participate in the online auction.
That is true. Thank you for reminding. I did win some items that way, when there were times I could not go, so. But please, support your community school. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Public Health or the Building and Public Property Report, Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Pavlados. The Building Department would like to welcome the following new businesses located at the shops of Mill Creek and Mill Creek Center. Pausen Claus, a pet specialty retailer, offering pet food, pet supplies, and grooming. Sal's Phillies, serving cheese steak sandwiches, chicken gyro burgers, and hot dogs. And Initial Cuts, a new barber shop opening soon.
Hey, can I mention, I went to Sal's, and I am not a cheese steak connoisseur. I haven't had an official grilled one from Philly, so I can't say. But it was good. But I got to say, the fries, they got like a zillion different kinds of fries. So good. So if you get a chance, stop in, support our local establishment.
I was about to add, please support our new businesses.
Take the word right out of your mouth, sorry.
As well as existing businesses in the village, provided they want your patronage, and that they act in a nondiscriminatory fashion.
You have to remember, she has no announcements today.
I'm just here for the ride.
Thanks for dropping in.
Would you like to continue?
No, no, you go ahead, enjoy your report.
I appreciate it.
Just hand this one over.
I'm just here for decoration. The Building Department processed, I don't do pretty, okay? Let's get that straight right quick and in a hurry.
Records of jeopardy here.
It is jeopardy, wait a minute.
I thought we were going to get out of here by 7:40. That's not going to happen. The Building Department processed seven permits from February 7th through 20th, resulting in $10,192.28 of permit fees. Fourteen inspections were completed during the aforementioned time period. Madam Community Director, have I missed anything?
No, you have not, sir.
Thank you, ma'am, I do appreciate it, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. Public Health and Safety, Commissioner Polk.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Pavlados. Your mom would be so proud. I just have a couple of quick announcements. Some of you may already know this, but the Palos Park Police Department wants to remind everyone that we, the Police Department, participates in a safety program that supports individuals living with disabilities to have the public safety personnel better respond to their needs. What does that mean? So, many of you already know that if you call 911, your information, your location, pops up on the 911 dispatcher's screen. There is also a computer program that has salient or relevant information that pops up at the same time. So this program allows people at their discretion, it's a voluntary program, to describe if there's someone, or if you have a special need living in that house, so that the first responders have some sort of an idea as they're rolling up to your residence, or wherever you happen to be. And that information is provided, again, on a voluntary basis by participating in this program called Premise Alert. The information is kept confidential. The forms, you can get the form either here at the Palos Park Police Department during normal business hours, or you can give us a holler at 708-671-3770. We'll have somebody drop off a form if you so desire. And it, you know, you fill out the information that's on it. Some of it is demographic, some of it is descriptive, particularly describing the particular special needs that you'd like to have known to the first responders. And it'll get entered into the database, and that way, if there's an emergency call, that information is already available to the first responders. So again, it's a reminder that we've been participating in this program for a while, and if you care to join, it's totally voluntary. Just give us a holler, or come on in and pick up a form, and we'll be happy to enroll you in the program. The next announcement is a reminder that the Palos Park Police Department has joined the Orland Park Police Department in pursuing partnerships for substance abuse and mental health administrative programs. If you've been following us on social media, you recognize that we now have the ability, the Palos Park Police Department has the ability to provide antidotes to opiate overdoses. And now that we're able to do that, we've recognized that there are certain issues in the community that really require a broader intervention than what we can provide within the Palos Park Police Department. And so, I've charged the department with the responsibility of looking at alternative avenues that would support programs to deal with issues such as mental health services and substance abuse. And we've partnered with the Orland Park Police Department to try and secure grant monies in order to be able to provide educational opportunities, to provide resources, in order for the Palos Park Police Department to improve our ability to be able to intervene both in instances of substance abuse as well as mental health. So you may see that somewhere in the media or in social media, and I just wanted to let you know that that's why we did it. And then I want to give you all a heads up that the Palos Park Preventative Maintenance Service on the Village of Palos Park Emergency Sirens will take place in early March this year. Again, we test these sirens periodically. We're getting into that time of the year where it's not unusual for us to have tornado or storm alerts, and we want to make sure that all the equipment is responding appropriately. We'll send out a notice before we actually do test the sirens, so that you can be aware, but that's going to happen at some point in March. And again, you know, now that we're getting into storm season, it's useful to review your household preparation issues, if there should be a tornado warning. You know, where are you going to go? Where are you going to meet? What are you going to take with you? Those are important things to have prepared ahead of time in order to be able to deal with the emergency as it occurs. And then we've got some stuff up on the website outlining some warnings of impending storms, some things to look for, as well as some safety guidelines. Your automobile is a terrible place to be in the middle of a tornado. Worst is underneath an overpass somewhere, because the storm winds funnel through the overpass. And I'd be happy to provide you with pictures of cars that have tried to weather out a tornado by sneaking underneath the underpass. If you are trapped in your car, that's not a good place to be. Side of the road, anything is preferable to being under an overpass. So take a minute if you want to, take a look at that information that's available to you. Chief Miller, anything you want to add?
Nothing, Commissioner.
Thank you very much, and that concludes my report, Mayor Protem Pavlados.
Thank you, Commissioner Polk.
You're welcome.
I have no official financial report or mayor's report, but I do have a couple of announcements. McCord Gallery and Cultural Center will hold an exhibition of Native American art and culture, March the 3rd through the 17th. General admission is $10 for members and $12 for non-members. Students and children under 18 are free. Immerse yourself in the rich culture of the Native Americans. This exhibit showcases authentic rugs, jewelry, paintings, pottery, and figurines crafted by well-known artists from many tribes, including the Navajo, the Koda, the Hopi. The gallery hours are Monday through Friday, 9 to 2, and Saturday, 11 to 4. StAG Music Boosters present art for the season in Arts and Craft Festival on Saturday, March the 17th, from 9 to 4, and Sunday, March the 18th, from 10 to 3. The festival will include arts, crafts, vendor booths, raffles, lunch and food sampling. Adult admission is $2 for the show, children are free. Music Boosters appreciates your support in helping them raise funds for the music programs at StAG benefiting hundreds of high school students. So if we get a chance, please support both of those events, they're very good, and they are events of the community. And that concludes my announcements, and Clerk Aragoni, do you have a report on the Clerk's Report?
Yes, I have a few announcements. Early voting begins Monday, March 5th, and runs through Monday, March 19th, for the March 20th gubernatorial primary election. The closest sites for us would be the Orland Township at 14807 Ravinia Avenue in Orland Park, and Palos Heights Recreation Center, 6601 West 127th Street in Palos Heights. They're going to be open from Monday through Friday from 9 to 5. Saturdays is also 9 to 5, and Sundays is 10 to 4. So there's no reason not to get out there if you can vote on election day. Also, daylight savings time begins on Sunday, March 11th, turning clocks ahead one hour before going to bed on Saturday night, March 10th. And I think, I just would like to mention our senior club, what we're going to be having, you're referring to this as tornado season, and I think everybody remembers the tornado that struck Oaklawn. It was 50 years ago, which is kind of hard to go at home. And this gentleman, I saw the presentation, actually, it was 50 years last year, I couldn't get him though, he was kind of booked up.
It was 67, wasn't it?
Yeah.
67.
And he had a really interesting presentation, lots of pictures and stories. 95th and Southwest Highway, it was just gone. It's an amazing thing, he gives just this excellent presentation, so I think it's one that, because of the season we're entering, is going to be a good one for us.
Well, originally, the Hilton Hotel that was built on Cicero was supposed to go on that corner.
Wow.
And then after the tornado, they decided that the other place was a little better location.
I think if anything, they should have put it there.
What's the chances of it happening?
You never know.
Yeah, never know.
But anyway, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Clerk Aragoni. Managers Report, Manager Bain?
I have one item for council's consideration, and that is to the changes and updates to the manual of personnel policies. The current personnel manual is originally approved by the council on March 23rd of 2009, and been updated various times since then, with the last time being in June of 2013. These updates come as we clarify and clear up some of the items in the personnel manual that may not be clear, update them as soon as we change policies and different things, and also to update them and to conform with items required of us from our Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency, IRMA, our risk and casualty pool. A couple of the, you know, some of these things are fairly minor in nature, but some of them include basically putting in the personnel manual, the travel and expense policy that was adopted by the council in January of 2017, that's part of state law required that, and also the policy prohibiting sexual harassment, that was approved by the council by ordinance in December of 2017, again, following state law. Some of the other clarifications, including, you know, things like our training policy procedures, our workers' compensation, we had a different meeting there other than IRMA, and that's how it goes. And then one of the IRMA requirements is outside employment in conflicts of interest. That just is trying to get a indemnity agreement from full-time employees, secondary employers, so the village is covered. So those are some of the issues contained in there. A lot of it's just cleanup work, so I would ask that the council approve these corrections updates.
Are there any questions, any discussions?
In light of that, I make a motion to approve corrections, updates to the Village of Palos Parks Manual of Personnel Policies, and would seek a second.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Milovich Walters?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
The other thing I have is an announcement, and this is a follow-up to last meeting's announcement I had on our trail and bikeways plan. The plan is now moving to its next stage, which is going to be a public meeting. It's not a public hearing, but it's a public meeting before the village's Plan Commission. That will take place on Thursday, March 15th, at 7:00 PM in this room. The meeting will begin with an informal poster board discussion, followed by a PowerPoint presentation, and a Q and A time period. The village is seeking the commission's input and guidance on the plan at the meeting prior to being presented to the village council later in May. So information will be on our website and elsewhere. Just wanted to make note that the bikeways and trails plan is moving to its next stage before the Plan Commission on Thursday, March 15th, at 7:00 PM. Thanks.
Thank you. Announcements?
I have one other thing.
I have one.
Because you know, but you go first, because I don't want to, like, jump on.
I'm going to say the same thing you are.
Okay, then you go.
Moes, I just want to compliment you, the staff, and our whole staff here, and the wonderful job you guys did on the chili cook-off. It was well done, the entertainment was great, the chili was really good. I was one of the judges, I enjoyed that very much. Staff did a great job of doing it. So I just want to compliment everybody here at the village, what a wonderful job that they did. Did I get you?
Thank you. I got, I got another one, though.
Okay.
Yeah, but that was a good one, that was a good one. I just want to remind everyone, this weekend is the last weekend of our Palos Village Players doing a show called Funny Little Thing Called Love. This Friday and Saturday nights, 7:30, they use our recreation center as their theater, so the stage and their seats and everything. It is only, let's see, adults $20, seniors and students 18, but you get to save $5 at Hackney's on an entree if you have a ticket from the show. So, yeah, you can order tickets by calling 877-PVPTIX, or visit palosvillageplayers.com. But again, this Friday and Saturday, 7:30 PM, our recreation center.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I got.
Citizens and visitors, is there anyone that would like to step to the mic?
Robert Deal, 8506 West 119 Fifth. Under the Freedom of Leadership Act, I've twice requested a copy of the survey and refused issuance of a permit to build a fence in my backyard, and twice I've been denied by KFC, which quoted the following. Architects' plans, engineers' technical submissions, and other construction-related technical documents, projects not constructed or developed in all the public funds, and the safety projects constructed and developed with public funds, including that led into power generating and distribution stations, and other transmission and distribution facilities, water treatment facilities, airport facilities, sports stadiums, convention centers, and all government-owned operating, or operated by builders, but only to the extent that disclosure would amplify security. Could somebody here explain how requesting a survey of original property is being denied because of this? Okay, no lawyer, doesn't want you talking to me. Part two, joint committee and administrative rules for surveys in the Illinois, pertaining to mortgage service. Mortgage inspections intended only for use by mortgage lender and/or title insurance, and only as a professional opinion of relationship of improvement with respects to deed lines and existence, location, type of buildings on the property, intent of which is to insist in relation to property suitably to service collateral for mortgages. It is not opinion as to deed, title, or plot of lines, which are boundaries. It is not to be used for matters of boundary disputes, legal actions between landowners, or for construction purposes. No new legal description can be created from a mortgage inspection. Last March 27th, I brought this up, and Mr. Reed said that he was afraid the expense of a boundary survey would prohibit, be prohibited for people wanting to rent a fence. From what I read, accepting a mortgage survey for an instructional offense puts the village in legal jeopardy. I would suggest you do that.
I would suggest that you do not quote me based on your recollection of events. I know what I said, and what you've just espoused does not reflect the intent of what I said. I said. Therefore, to the extent that you have any issues with what any of us say, if you'd like to meet with more than one of us, so that there are witnesses as to what has or has not been said, and we don't have to rely on one person's recollection that may or may not be correct, we'd be happy to do so. As I indicated, don't interrupt me. As I indicated to you on last week, if you want to meet with me and my staff, we'd be more than happy to do so, provided there are witnesses that are there to actually know what has been said, and we don't have to rely on anyone's recollection, because we are all aware that what can and will be said can or may be used either in a deposition or a court of law. We are not going to walk down that road, period.
Okay. I also, after that meeting, gave you a letter and a copy of the boundary survey I had made, which included the price and so forth, and I would copy that tonight.
To the extent you want to leave something with the village, our normal hours are from nine to five, you can come and leave it at that time. I'm not going to take anything from you tonight, I'm not going to have a one-on-one with you outside of the building, that's just what I've got to say about it.
Okay. Last thing I wanted to say, if somebody has law pertaining to the removable fences that are accidentally built on another's property, basically what the law says is that after being informed that fence is a truly another's property, the person who erects the fence has six months to either contradict the boundary survey that was given to them showing that fence is improperly placed, or to remove, enter my property to remove said fence. After that, Illinois says, the person who built the fence has no right to it. So this, this is one of the first laws, and I look back to 1819. Initially, it was a one-year period, and in 1874, they amended it and shortened that period to six months. So just for your information in case you decide to continue using mortgage surveys for construction projects. Thank you.
We are well aware of the law, based on information and belief, this is a dispute between two private parties, which will not be adjudicated by the Village of Palos Park, period.
And I'm saying, in the future, if you want to protect other residents' properties, you may want to consider the administrative codes for surveyors and the use of particular types of surveys.
We have a village attorney that's well versed in municipal law. I'm not going to debate the issue. We have a village attorney.
I suggest you apply law.
Don't interrupt me.
Thank you, Mr. Beal. Are there any other audience participation at all? Okay, if not, then we're ready for adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thanks, be safe out there.